Hereby called to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, April 10th, 2023. Mr. Trudgeon, would you call the board, please?
Councilmember Groff here.
Councilmember Strawn.
Here.
Councilmember Ratten.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And with us at the dais, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who is on my right at the end of the dais, and our city manager, Pat Trudgeon, who is on my left at the other end of the dais. We also have staff, department heads, and others who will be participating and presenting in the meeting as the meeting progresses, and those folks will be introduced as we get to their portions of the agenda. We do want to remind folks, if you have a cellphone, to either silence it or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting. There will be opportunity for public comment at various times through the course of the meeting, and we'll go through the protocol for that in a little bit here, just so folks can become familiar with that. I would just note, for anybody who may be participating remotely via Zoom, that the way to get brought into the meeting for public comment, if you wish to comment on any particular, at any particular point in the agenda, is to use the raise-your-hand feature in Zoom and let us know, and we can bring you in for your comment. If you wish, you can turn on your camera, but you absolutely have to turn on your mic, otherwise we won't be able to hear your comments. With that bit of housekeeping, then, oh, and I should note also, there is one copy of the meeting materials in the back of the chambers for the public, and I believe we've also made extra copies of the ordinance that we'll be considering this evening in case people need to see that, and I believe those are back there as well. So if anybody needs that information, we've provided that for members of the public. And with that, then, we'll ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, next on the agenda this evening is approval of tonight's agenda, and I will check with staff, as I always do, first, to see if there are any changes since the agenda was published. Mr. Trudgeon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to remove item 10B from the consent agenda, the two temporary gambling permits. The original packet that did go out just had one temporary gambling permit, and one has been added. The online packet has been updated since last week, but I just want to call that out. It's a fairly minor issue, but I just want to make sure we take that up separately.
All right, so remove that for separate consideration. Any other council-requested changes to the agenda or items to remove from the consent agenda for separate consideration? All right, and speaking of the consent agenda, that is on the second page of our agenda. It's Section 10, items A through M. Generally, these items are taken up as a single motion with a limited opportunity for discussion and public comment, and they're also very late in the meeting. And so we always do want to check with folks, if there is anyone here to comment or ask a question on an item on the second page of the agenda in Section 10, items A through M, this would be the time to let us know, and we can take that item and move it forward in the meeting and give you an opportunity to ask your question or make your comment earlier in the meeting. Is there anyone who's here this evening to comment or question on an item in Section 10 of our agenda, 10A through M? And just to be clear, that doesn't include our business items, which is the update on Envision Roseville, the massage therapy ordinance proposal, or the appointments to the commissions. It just is the items, once again, on that second page. Is there anyone here for one of those items? All right, seeing no one, then, it appears that with the one adjustment of moving item 10B for separate consideration from the consent agenda, then we have our proposed agenda. Is there a motion to approve that as amended?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, it's moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Groff. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of proceeding with the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. All right, next on our agenda is an opportunity for general public comment. We will provide an opportunity for public comment on various agenda items as they come forward this evening, but we do also reserve, at the start of each meeting, an opportunity for general public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Those might be items that are either of interest to people in the community or items related to city business, but, once again, items that are not being considered on our agenda this evening. Is there anyone here to speak to an item that's not on tonight's agenda and would like to speak during general public comment at this time? And this is, of course, open to people who are participating remotely as well. If you do wish to speak at general public comment, please use that raise-your-hand feature in Zoom and let us know, and we can bring you into the meeting for your general public comment. No hands raised? No. All right. Then, that being the case, we'll go ahead and close the opportunity for general public comment this evening and proceed with the rest of our meeting. As was noted during consideration of the agenda, we do have one item now removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration, and that is item 10B, which is consideration of some temporary gambling permits, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgeon to introduce that item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 10B approves two temporary gambling permits, one for a bingo event at Cedar Home Community Building on April 29th, hosted by the Friends of Roseville Parks, and the other by the Parkview Center School PTSA for a raffle to be held on May 12th. I call this out because the original agenda and packet only had the Friends of Roseville Parks temporary gambling permit, so I just want to bring it forward so you know that it is considering both of them as part of this action. That's all I really had beyond that.
Are there any questions from the council for staff on this request for the two, the approval of the two temporary gambling permits? All right, we'll just double-check if there's anyone here for this item this evening. It wasn't planned to be a separate consideration item, but in case anybody is here to speak to these gambling permits, we do want to provide that opportunity. Doesn't appear that we have anybody clamoring for an opportunity to speak to these. With that, then, we'll move to council consideration. Councilmember Bratton.
I'll move approval of both of the temporary gambling permits.
I'll second it.
All right, it sounded like Councilmember Groff seconded that. It was moved by Councilmember Bratton. Discussion on the motion?
This is normal, and there are positive groups in our community.
All right, any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor of approving those temporary gambling permits signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Those items are approved. All right, then, that brings us to our business items this evening, and our first business item is to receive an update on our Envision Roseville community visioning process, and we have our assistant city manager, Rebecca Olson, with us this evening. I almost said Rebecca Trudgeon. That would have been scandalous.
[laughing]
Rebecca Olson, who is here with our consultant, and will make introductions and make the presentation this evening. Welcome, Ms. Olson.
Thank you, Mayor Rowe and council. That was a little bit of a fluster. So, as I collect myself here, thank you for having us here. Tonight, we're just going to give a brief update on the process that we've been undergoing with Envision Roseville. I'll provide a little bit of background, and then I'll turn it over to Bridgette here from ZAN Associates for the actual update. So, in July of 2022, council authorized a contract with ZAN Associates to conduct a community-wide visioning process. At the January 9th meeting of this year, you did receive an update from ZAN regarding many of the events and activities surrounding our engagement, engagement on the project, as well as an overview of the business engagement and a quick, brief overview of what's happening next. So, one of the things I did want to highlight is that throughout Phase 1 of this project, the process for gathering feedback has been focused not just on gathering that widespread feedback and input from our community, but also strategically focused to target community groups whose voices have been historically underrepresented in previous engagement efforts. And having a strategic and intentional focus for engagement ensures that we specifically target groups who may be impacted by the decisions that we make. However, it also requires significant manpower and relies heavily on the interest of those we're seeking to engage. Some of the things that we've noticed is that with the ever-increasing focus on seeking input from community members, we are competing for people's interest in areas. For example, we all receive a lot of surveys. You know, you go shopping, you get surveys asking for your input. We also have other agencies that are also seeking input at the time. So, although we are doing our best, there are some times when we can't reach everybody that we want to reach. But we did work very closely with our consultant to develop an engagement plan intentionally designed to gather feedback from specific demographic groups, and tonight you'll hear some updates on the work that we've done in Phase 2, I'm sorry, in Phase 1, and what's coming up in Phase 2. So I will turn it over to Bridgette here.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having me. Again, I'm Bridgette Bjorklund. I'm the Director of Education and Equity at ZAN Associates, the consultant you hired to do this great work, and we're excited today to give you a little bit of an update about what's happening with the project. And so, these are the four things that are going to happen. We're going to give you a status update. We're going to have a sneak peek of the results that might happen, or that have happened so far, and then look forward to what's going to happen in Phase 2, and then have some time for discussion and questions at the end. And so, as we think about the progress update, first of all, we're going to start with the schedule, recap the results, and do the other things I just mentioned in the previous slide. So this looks like our project schedule summary, and you'll see what we did in Phase 1. That was really our first grassroots effort to find out what the community is thinking, what are their ideas for a new vision for the city of Roseville. And differently, in Phase 2, what we're going to do is take, close the loop, and share what we've learned and narrow down those key aspirations. We want to dive deeper into these themes and determine quality outcomes for a strong community vision. And I also want to make note that division, or Phase 2 was delayed just a little bit because we decided to keep the survey open a little bit longer. It will have no effect on the results, but just wanted you to know that we moved a little bit into Phase 2 with the survey. It won't impact the overall schedule. So with that, what did we do in Phase 1 community engagement? Well, we had over 20 live engagement events. That's a lot of engaging, 20 different times over the past Phase 1. We met with eight of them were live events, 12 were community organization meetings, and we had over 20 conversations with the community. From the online and digital perspective, we had over 550 responses to our survey, our interactive map, Hello! Lamp posts, which I hope you saw around the community, and our business survey, which actually did close out. It is not ongoing anymore, and we did finish that up. And then, we had two major workshops with the community advisory group, as well as dozens of meetings with our project management team and weekly project check-ins. Here is, so here are some photos from some work that we did right after our last check-in with you. These were from some very awesome events that we did. On the left side there, you'll see, at the Roseville Library, we had a community visioning event, and we had people moving around and going to different tables and giving us lots of feedback and having great conversations about what they'd like to see happen in Roseville. You can see we did a lot in all of our events where we gave an opportunity for people to write on Post-it notes right in specific areas of Roseville on a map to let us know what they are thinking. The other three pictures are from the African-American Family Night at the high school, and this was an amazing event because the whole night was about inspiration and about black girl magic and all the cool awards the kids were getting and different communities coming together. And then I was able to come up at the end and do a little bit of a speech and ask them, what do they vision for Roseville? And so they were all pumped up already about all the cool things they were doing, and then I said, hey, you get a chance to make, have a voice in your future here in your own community. And it was so inspiring to see them get excited, and they had big cards, and they wrote down their ideas, and it was just a really fun event. So you can see, it was very well populated and attended, and it was really a lot of fun. And you can see some of your community leaders there in that middle picture as well. So, the question is with all, oh, and I meant to say one more thing back here, if I'm going to go back, one, two. If you can see this lovely lady here, my pointer, she is one of the editors of the newspaper, and so after this, she wrote an article about our event and then put the survey in the newspaper so the young people at the high school could also vote and tell us what they thought. And then one other cool thing is Cory Yonkey, one of our engagement team here as well, who works for you in the city. He was out at the adult ed language for English Language Learners and speaking with them as well. So another group we targeted. So, who have we reached? Well, when you look in the gray box there, you'll see some demographics that we kind of anticipated. These are the folks that came and looked, gave us input that were online. There was a pretty good coverage of ages, but the 18 to 24s, we didn't have as many. That's partly why we went to the high schools and talked to the kids specifically. You can see that we were predominantly white, English-speaking. Only 6% had a disability, and 85 and 86% people lived in single-family homes or owner-occupied residences. Therefore, it was on us to be very specific and strategic about targeting other voices in the community, and you can see, when we went out to the events that we specifically targeted, they, it changes dramatically. And we start to get 20 to 40% of people of color overall, non-English speakers. We're talking to more young people, visitors, businesses, students, and renters as well. And so we know where the gaps are, and we have a plan in Phase 2 to specifically target these gaps. And these are a few that we are looking to target, and we have some cool events already in mind to target them. We've been working really closely with the liaisons at the high school who have such great connections with different communities, and it's, it's been, they have been amazing. If I could give them a huge shout-out, they have been just awesome. And they have really helped us connect with the families there, and we'll continue to do that. And we help to get out on some soccer fields here when they dry up, because that's one of our, one of our plans to do. So that's kind of the gaps that you see there, and I just want to echo what Rebecca said. We sent out dozens of emails and reached out to many, many folks that did not respond also. So just to let you know that we have targeted a lot of groups, and they are overloaded, and we understand what's happening there. But we're tenacious, and we'll keep trying, and we'll keep at it, and, and you know it's about relationships, and that takes a little bit of time, and so we've been working on that as well. So what, what did we find out? This is a high-level overview of some of the things that we learned during our Phase 1. We have extensive data that we're sorting through, sorting through, sorting through. Lots of, kind of, what's so exciting about is it's layered and textured and deep. It's not just surface level. We've done some great work with asking those next, second, third questions. We've done activities where we get beyond the top layer to find out what people want to do. That's the exciting part of this work. And, but we, we came up with these themes, and interestingly, these themes don't change a lot depending on demographic, which I, I think is very interesting. And so you'll see that when people were asked to rank or talk about what matters most to them, you'll see that transportation and infrastructure was a clear winner. And then environment, housing came up again and again and again. Businesses, especially small businesses in our community, was a big one. And then making sure that it was welcoming, safe. Our schools were a huge focus as well, as well as civic engagement and health and wellness. So let's dig down into that a little bit. We, they really do align with what we're existing aspirations. We haven't seen anything that's shockingly new and different than what we have before, but they, it shifted a little bit, and the emphasis on which is most important has shifted. So, for example, we hear a lot about parks, and when we, in the past, parks have been a lot to do with the environment, but now parks are a lot about splash pads, community centers, places where families can get together and congregate and spend time together, where different cultures can come together and get to know each other, where different generations can get together and get to know each other, where we can have different, people of different demographics playing soccer together. Those kinds of things are really a big deal. So while it's still parks, the emphasis has changed a little bit. Schools came up quite a bit, too, and a lot of that had to do with, I had a really good note about that, and I'll come back to it in a minute because I'm not sure where it is, but there was something good about that, and I'll come back to it in a minute. But overall, there were no major disparities between the different engagement types or the cohorts. You can see that on the Hello! Lamp post, a lot of it was about green space and environment, and that's partially because of where they were posted, right? Where they were out in the community. Diverse cultures tended to want a welcoming and inclusive place. One that really jumped out at us was students wanting safety and security, and I don't think we can ignore that. It came up again and again, and it was heartfelt in some of the comments you'll read when you dive deeper, and that's something that's really important to our young people. And again and again, small businesses and affordable housing. So, those are what we're seeing, big picture, and we'll continue to dive in more. And in Phase 2, we're going to go out, and now we're going to say, here is what we've heard, and now we want to go even deeper. What do you have to say about safety and security? What do you have specifically to say about schools? We know what the general themes are. We know what's coming out, and now we want to come up with some real outcomes. What can we really strive for? What specifics can we do to make Roseville even better than it already is? And so we're planning that with a very short questionnaire. We want to lead everybody back to that website again. They'll be able to see the results, kind of an overview, a short questionnaire. We'll have two to three community events that people can come out to, but really, we're going to focus in on targeted communities. Not a lot of the big ones that we did in Phase 1, but more about the smaller focus groups and getting into, talk to people in different parts of the community. These are three we are going to focus on. We'll have flyers with results, and we hope that you all will help us get that out and spread the word and drive people to the website. There'll be email lists. We'll be in person, and of course, there you are, you. So, that's what's next. Closing that loop and letting people know that their voice mattered is critically important to us, and so we're looking forward to doing that piece as well. So, here we are at the discussion piece, and my questions for you are, do you have any clarification? Somebody forgot a question mark. That's really bumming me out. The teacher in me is like, what? What surprised you, and are there any other questions or feedback for us?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bjorklund. I really do appreciate the, the update and the information this evening and in the packet as well, and I'll open it up to members of the council. If you've got questions or comments, feedback, or answers to those questions on the board. Councilmember Strawn.
Thank you. I did miss your last presentation due to illness, so thank you for being here. I was curious, you mentioned multiple times schools, and because we are separate from the Roseville schools, was curious to know what, we don't have a lot of impact as the city on schools, and so curious to know how that, what that overlap and how is that that works.
Yeah, and so I'll let Rebecca help me with that, too, if she has anything to say. But I don't think you can totally separate the schools with the community, right? Because they're, they're, they work hand in hand, but we will be able to offer what we find out, share those with the school district, and then those things that the community can do something about, we would lend it that way. But a lot of it has to do with inclusivity, providing different opportunities for accessibility, those kinds of things that have come up. So we'll have to look at and narrow that down and kind of separate, here are the things the schools can do something about, and here are the things that the council can do something about. And when we dig down deeper into that data, we'll be able to differentiate that.
And I will just piggyback off of what Bridgette said, is that in this Phase 2, one of the things that we do is, as she mentioned, dig deeper and ask them, you know, what are these outcomes look like? And that's when we would focus the conversation on what the city can do versus what other agencies or entities can do. So that's kind of, we, big picture, and then we're funneling it down.
I can actually give you one better example of that. We've had people talking about things like after-school care, how do we use generations, the different generations, and our seniors, and transportation and getting to people and where people live, and how does that all affect how we take care of our whole community? And so while they might be at school, where do they go before and after, and how can we kind of bridge that gap and use these resources of people that are around and help that come together? Does that make sense? So while it's a school thing, it's also a community thing.
Yeah, I think we're just unique in that we are separate entities, and so I, I just want to make sure our focus stays within the areas that Ms. Olson is mentioning, that, you know, it's things that we are, we can action on because, you know, it's nice information, but if the school district wasn't part of the setting up that information, it's information that pay grade, but it might not be something they can active, actively use, and I want to make sure that we're utilizing our resources to make sure we're really focused on what our community, because we have multiple school districts in the area, and we have Catholic schools and homeschoolers and everything else. So making sure that we're focusing on the city of Roseville as much as possible and not going outside of that scope too much or focusing on other agencies, but really on what we can do, because I think that was our goal in arranging this.
Yeah. Great clarification. Great to be reminded of that as we dig deeper. So thank you for clarifying that.
And before I recognize other councilmembers, too, there's two points I wanted to make just in relation to that. It's not unusual that we're getting that type of response in this process, because for those who might have been involved in the Imagine Roseville 2020 process, you know, 17 years ago, it was very similar, that there were sort of a cluster of responses related to schools and education. We had to figure out how to do with that then, so certainly not, not new for, for Roseville and the process. But the other thing I'll note, too, is that, and I think Councilmember Groff was at the update we had this spring with the, with the Roseville School District. Anyway, they just had completed a fairly substantial visioning process of their own, and so a lot of what we may be gathering is, is sort of parallel or hopefully duplicate, you know, hopefully concurs with what they were already hearing. And so that, certainly, you know, to the extent we can kind of feed that to the folks that can use that at their end, and like I said, hopefully it confirms what they've already gathered through their process. But once again, yeah, we want to make sure we're, we're focused on what we can do at the city and, and affect things that we have the control over. And with that, I'll recognize other councilmembers for feedback, questions. Councilmember Ratten.
I agree with also the thing. For me, it's about not creating false impressions with folks when we go back to them in this Phase 2, is try to tie it back together, that we don't say, hey, and what do you think about education, and keep doing discussion points around that, because then they might think we're going to be able to do something about it. Right?
Yeah.
So, that would be my thought on that. How many data points or responses do we have from Hello! Lamp posts this fall and winter?
You know, I don't have the specific number with me, but I certainly can get that back to you through Rebecca. Thanks for that.
That would be great. Yes, please. And then I had a question for Ms. Olson, an email about the graphic showing, here's the end of Phase 1, then 2 and 3. I don't, I remember, I'm sorry, I was looking at the packet here, but if you could kind of talk about what those blue boxes and Xs mean for us as we look at those phases.
Yeah. Do you want me to go back to it? Yeah. Okay. Oh, hold on.
Yeah, I don't remember which slide it was, but.
Keep going. There we go.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So what, what's happening here, please?
My understanding, the gentleman, I think Dan, put this, this schedule together, and he's unable to be here, but what he shared with me is, the blue boxes demonstrate kind of where in the process this is happening. The Xs in the box talk about the deliverables. Whether there's, whether there have been deliverables, it's kind of his internal checklist for himself and for the, the project. And, you know, I don't know that it is necessarily needed for our standpoint here, but it's demonstrating that there are deliverables in each of those boxes that need to occur or have occurred.
So a deliverable might be an event. It might be a council, a CAG, a community advisory group meeting, things like those specifically that we said that we would do, and so we put them on there to make sure that we're meeting all the deliverables.
Sure. That makes sense in some of these, but like when we look at business focus groups, they're just the two blue things. I just don't know how that all adds up or what's going on.
And my understanding is that would be when we're doing the engagement and outreach, similar to the Hello! Lamp post deployment and the Phase 2 listening sessions and events. That's when they're occurring. But there's not a specific item during that engagement period that they need to deliver for our project.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Schroeder.
Thank you for the update. I appreciate that. You talked about that you are, there's a gap in the 18 to 24-year-olds. What is the breakdown of the rest of it, then? I mean, so was it mainly older people, or was it scattered across the other age groups? Or how's the breakdown among the other age groups?
The 24 to senior group or above 60 group was pretty consistently spread out. It was just a little bit lower in 18 to 24. So that lets us know that we have to do some work in that area. I don't have all, because they're still digging through it, so I can't give you exact numbers, but they were all pretty evenly spread out, that we did a pretty good job of getting different age groups from 24 and up. And so, and we have had students and kids in there, but that's kind of minimal, minimal feedback. So that, young So that younger group is the group that we want to target in this, and that was partly why we went to the high school. I can't help but go back a little bit too, to what all three of you also said about the schools. Again, I, I just wanted to clarify one thing, and that is that schools are one of the few things that reach everybody. It's, it's a public entity. Everybody has to go to school, whether it's private or not. And they also have the best connections with the community and the diverse communities that we are trying to reach. So while we need to separate that, that's a lot of where we're able to get some of our engagement and our connections to the community. So inevitably, in those situations, people are going to tell us about schools. And so it's our job to decipher that and separate that out. I just wanted to clarify that because we do understand that that's a different thing. But it's going to like bleed in there because of who we're, who helps us get out there. And as I mentioned, I'm a former teacher, and so I understand that that's where you get your hands out into the, out into the community.
What about the seniors?
Yeah, so that's another group that we are, we have on our list to focus on as well.
Because I didn't see it was in the list of targets. So that's why it just says, young people.
Well, it has been targeted. I think he just didn't put it on here, but we have already discussed that group as well. And so it's kind of, we have had a decent amount of seniors come to our events and fill out the surveys and things, but we haven't specifically gone to like senior living places yet. So I guess we'll have to go back when all the data's done and look at again where the gaps are. This is all preliminary. That's the hard thing about sharing data with you right now, because we're still digging through it. But as far as I know, it's pretty balanced, but I know there have been conversations in our meetings about talking to some of the senior groups as well.
Because Roseville does have a.
Very large population, yes.
So I think it's important we, we include them.
Oh, for sure. And like, I mean, I've been at almost everything that you saw on those signs, and I can guarantee you that there have been seniors at all of them. But we certainly, certainly focus on that. Thank you for bringing that back to our attention.
Councilmember McGrath.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and the update. It's helpful. I think just a couple comments. I think it's really, it was good work using existing organizations to go out to, to reach them in person, because survey fatigue is a very real thing. We all get them in our email every day. How many, you know, how many are you going to click on? So I think we have to do that in order to get good, accurate information, and I think it sounds like you are doing that. I thought the soccer team was an interesting one you threw in there. Aspirations, that was, that's, one of the reasons we wanted to pursue this is to find out whether we're still on track with Roseville, because that, I think it was 20 years, was more than that, that we did this before. So it's kind of interesting to hear that the aspirations stay similar, but it'll be interesting to find out what the final, final statement is on that. And so that's really all I had. I don't have any questions on it. I think, of course, we have to fill in the gaps where we can. Typically, when I go to the meetings also, I find that the seniors are pretty well represented, but the younger people between 18 and 24 are not at those events as much, putting up the hosted notes and things. So I think that's probably where we're going to have to do some work.
Agreed.
Thanks.
Agreed. Thank you.
Other thoughts, Councilmember Braden?
I appreciate all these other thoughts and appreciate your point that schools are a great place to find our broader community. I agree with you 100%. I think I pushed that earlier, so thanks for pushing back a little bit, saying that. I think as we go back potentially into schools to do that, it's just important that the topic areas are not focused on the curriculum or on.
Oh, for sure.
Providing X services that normally would be happening in, in a school program. As your data comes back, thinking about seniors, certainly at Ampatutetcha, there are senior services that are happening there. Going to some of these facilities are already there. They often have organizations and leadership groups there, but you're going to get different seniors at these two different places. So ensuring that we're not just going to a place that, you know, $3,500, $4,000 a month to stay in, right? So thinking about how we do that. So as we look at that, if we say we need to find some more seniors to make sure we had a good balance, and I think we're interested in that, just thinking about how those different pieces fit together. And then my other, my other thing I had asked for this list of the people who are in the community advisory group, and I hope that we use them more than, I think they could be used more in these, in this next phase, more than a workshop. There are a lot of people who've been involved with our community in lots of different ways. It certainly is a diverse group of human beings in lots of ways. And so I hope that we're not just going to say, hey, we're going to have one more meeting with them, and then we're good. Because I think a lot can be, can be taken from this group. A lot can be given from this group, however you want to get that.
Mayor, Councilmember Etten, one of the promises we made to the group was the time commitment for them. So we would have to see if they are open and available for more, because sometimes people's schedules did not allow them to participate if it was going to be more than one or two work sessions. So we are more than happy to engage with them if they, if they want more opportunities, and, and we would welcome that. But we do also want to respect the, the promise that we made to them of the time commitment for the specific CAG when we ask them to participate.
Thank you.
I, I would say here, here, we got amazing information from them, and we really went deep, and we really pushed them, and it was fantastic. So as, as much as they want to come and talk to us, we'd love it. So I agree.
Sure. Well, and one of the things that we can take advantage with, I think a lot of those folks, is their connections in the community. And if it isn't necessarily them attending a session, at least maybe if there's, if, you know, if they might know somebody in a particular group or in a particular demographic or whatever we're trying to make a better connection with, and we can use their in, I think that's a great way that they can invest fairly small amount of their time, but still be very helpful in the process. And so as Councilmember Braden was saying, that, that's what was coming to my mind immediately is, you know, how can we use folks' existing connections to help us make those connections too?
Oh yeah, they gave us great ideas. And they also gave us ideas of people to talk to in the community, as well as narrowing down some of our aspirations too. They were kind of the first to come up with some of the bigger picture things that we were using later on. So huge help.
Councilmember Strong.
So I note at the end, you said, you, as in, I'm assuming you mean us as council in our positions. I'm wondering if we can get a list of upcoming activities that will be happening, because it's been somewhat chance that I've happened upon things that are happening? And if the expectation is that, you know, there's some engagement on our part, it'd be really nice if we knew when those were more than just happening upon them, or kind of guessing maybe this would be one. So that would be really helpful moving forward, especially as we go into the summer.
For sure.
And I think the key with that is if we know about it early enough, we can get it out to our networks and communicate it that way. The other thing I was going to note with respect to the 18 to 24, that's a lot of times is perhaps young parents, and, and sometimes it's very difficult to get their time, especially if there's childcare issues involved or things like that. I know, for instance, Discover Your Parks events seem to be events that have a lot of young families at them, and so that's a kind of a great opportunity to the, to the extent you can corral folks at those events, because they're busy having fun. But, but that may be one. And I know we've probably already taken advantage of those particular events over the course of the last year in Phase One, but certainly it comes to mind as a place where there are folks with young kids who may be in that 18 to 24 group already.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Strong.
And also, backs to the schools, early childhood family education is where a lot of young families adapt, connect to one another, and they have a toy lending library, which is very well used, and at least it has been in the past. So that is a way that a lot of families connect, so.
Keep them coming.
All right. All right, we'll do that. Anything else from the council or from the consultants or staff this evening? Well, we look forward to further getting into Phase Two and getting some more of that refinement and, you know, the next update.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you again. Great. Next on our agenda is to consider an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 309 related to massage therapy. And I believe City Manager Trudgen will be introducing this item. And just before we get into the introduction, we'll just give folks who may be interested in this topic this evening, just a little, kind of a heads up as to the process we'll go through, which we typically go through with agenda items, and you saw a little bit of it with some of the earlier items. We generally start with information presented by and provided by staff, usually sort of summarizing, outlining, and perhaps enhancing information that's in the report, that's in the paper information that we have or the online information. We do a round of questions and clarifications from the council to staff usually. Then we open it up for public comment and feedback from members of the public. And then we come back to council clarification of any information or additional questions from the council, and then sort of move towards then where we ultimately go as a council in taking action on this this evening. Potential actions could be to enact the ordinance this evening. Another potential action is to table it for further consideration or to make some changes. Another action might be to not do anything related to this and leave things the way they are in our ordinance. There may be other possibilities that, that are nuances of all those, but just to give folks a sense of kind of where things might go. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgen to bring this item before us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I do want to walk through a power, quick PowerPoint that just highlights some of the changes. As you notice, in looking at the ordinance, there was a lot of underlines and strike-throughs. There's a lot of changes in there. Some of it was reorganizing, but some of it is new content. So I want to try to specify that as much as possible, and certainly be happy to answer any questions. After I'm done with that, I do want to bring Chief Scheider, Deputy Chief Adams up, just to talk about the law enforcement side, I bet, to provide some additional background and context. And I would note that we have several bench handouts from emails from people regarding this ordinance. I think many of them are in the audience tonight, so I'm sure you'll hear from them, but I want to make sure that you do see those as well. So if we can just jump right in, this is a way of background. We've been talking about amending Chapter 309 for almost 18-plus months here. On November 8th, 2021, City Council did adopt an ordinance, 1607. We initially brought forward an ordinance that did a couple things that really specified that establishments that do not comply with state law, federal law, local laws can have their license denied, revoked, and renewed. We just wanted to state that very clearly in the ordinance. It was a little more ambiguous with the previous code. Also regarding, establishments should not have unlicensed persons conduct massages, being very specific. We did, as part of that original conversation, bring forward a cap of 10 licenses. At the time, the council did have a long discussion on that. They felt they weren't ready to do that. So they did cap, you as a council capped the number of licenses to 25, which was the amount we had at the time. But also wanted to have a much broader conversation about massage therapy, about adding some additional things. So that, that small ordinance was passed, but we did establish a cap at that point. In July of 2022, we brought back some additional amendments, as well as other material and things that we could be doing to better enforce and regulate massage therapy licenses. And one of the things that we spent a lot of time talking about that evening was the language we had initially in there about prohibiting the transfer of an establishment license. The idea behind that is that if we have a cap and looking to do a lower cap, we would have to not allow for transfers, otherwise we'll continue to see transfer after transfer, and those licenses will never go down to a lower cap. We also asked the council to consider a lower cap. But as, as the conversation went forward, there was a lot of concern about the transfer and prohibition. So the council did draw staff to go back and work on some additional language on that. So flash forward to here, oh, I should say, that, that night though, we didn't pass the ordinance, but since we only had 24 establishments at the time, we did amend the ordinance to have a cap of 24. So we are here tonight to talk about this comprehensive ordinance amendment regarding the overall regulation and licensing of both establishments and therapists. We did share this information with the establishments and posted on the city website. I would note there's been changes in every section, and I'll just try to highlight some of the very specific changes that are of concern. So let me just jump right into it. Chapter, Section 30901, which starts on line 30, just has a new section that articulates the rationale and need for licensing massage therapists, establishments, and massage therapists kind of purpose. Section 30902, which starts on line 65, we made some adjustments to the existing definitions, and then also added a new definition of accredited institution for the training of massage therapists. Overall, Sections 30903, 04, and 05 had a lot of changes in there, just to reorganize for clarity and in order. But I'll talk specifically about some of the more substantial changes. 30903B and C, which starts on line 14, we do list exceptions when a massage therapy establishment license or massage therapist license is not required. There's some very specific use of massages that are often related to healthcare that we did want to exempt, and some other things that we mentioned in the ordinance. So we do call out some exemptions. Going forward in 30904, about denying, suspending, or revoking massage therapy licenses, starting on line 168 in 30904G, we state that the owner or operator of the massage therapy establishment does not need to be licensed as a massage therapist, as long as they're not providing massage therapy. 30904H, which is line 171, was changed to allow for the total amount of massage therapy establishment licenses from 24 to 10. And we should put a pin in that and come back and talk about whether that's the appropriate number or what number we want to use. And also that the effective date for when this new cap begins is May 1st, 2023, and that's assuming some approval before that date. Then finally, in that Section 30904L, I believe, to state on line 178, states that the failure of establishment to renew their license, they lose their license, and it's considered a new application and will be subject to the cap. 30905, starting A, started on line 188, requires the applicants for massage therapist licenses to apply in person here at City Hall with proof of identity and a government-issued document, provide proof of graduation from an accredited institution as defined in the chapter, and also clarifies that the coursework of a minimum of 600 hours should be completed at one institution in the required subject areas. New language is added in Section 30905D, which starts on line 228, regarding the conditions of denial of a massage therapist's license, including unlawful conduct and violations of law related to the practice of massage therapy, regardless of whether such conduct resulted in criminal conviction. So if there's a charge against that, we can consider revocation. Moving on, under 30906, which starts on line 271, about restrictions and regulations for both establishments and licenses, we added a bunch of language in 30906. And several areas, such as requirement of a color photo to be displayed on the therapist's license, the idea behind that is to make sure there's a picture with the name of the license, and that's something we would provide as a city, and take that photo and provide that so it's displayed on the premises. Establishing the right for city to enter and inspect the licensed premise during open business hours, prohibiting the transfer of license from place to place or person to person, except if there are certain exceptions, and we'll go over those in a second. The businesses provide only the services posted in the business, so no additional off, off-menu, so to speak, services. The businesses must be on staff during the posted business hours, prohibiting the massage of certain body parts. City be notified if the premises are going to be enlarged, altered, or extended. Require the massage therapist to work for, or own a massage therapy establishment licensed by the city. Work for, own a massage. I'm not sure what that point is, as I'm reading that again. Prohibit the employment of unlicensed massage therapists. And also we require the proof of local residency in Minnesota, Wisconsin, for the massage therapist themselves, and also the person either owning or managing the massage therapist's establishment. We see, especially as massage therapists, there is a large amount of people coming from California that apply for licenses. And that is concerning, because we have no way of verifying if these are legitimate IDs and the right people here. We do know that people, I mean, what I mean by that is people that with a name and the person is, is the actual person. With the residency in Minnesota, Wisconsin, we did see other cities are doing that, and that's a way to verify that there is somebody that is living at a real address with a real name and the identity is verifiable. Now, as far as transfers, we do allow, under the current language, one transfer within a five-year period. This is an attempt to allow for existing business owners that are currently, have a license, the ability to sell their business if that is what they choose to do, because that is a concern we heard in the, in the previous meetings, where there was maybe a future retirement in place, and this was their life savings. And if they weren't able to sell the business and allow for a transfer, then that would wipe out their savings. So this would give a small window of five years for those businesses to do that and do it. do it once throughout that period. This is the way, once again, if we're going to be serious about a cap, we need to make sure there's mechanisms in place that over a period of time, based on what we've identified as a problem, meaning enforcement and regulation of all the massage therapist establishments we have in place, that we have a mechanism to, over time, get there. That's also a conversation point the council should have, and I know there's probably folks in the audience that feel strongly about that as well, that's something we should really talk about. So with that, I'll just, I'll pause. Happy to answer your questions on anything, but specifically, you know, one of the two things that we should really be talking about is the amount of licenses that we want to have and then the rules and regulations around transfers.
All right. And just a reminder to council members, too, that I think we want to make sure we have the public input before we start getting into sort of crafting changes to the ordinance as part of this phase of the process. So it's mostly at this point for council members. If you have questions for staff or you want additional information or clarification of anything that's already been put forward, this is the opportunity for that for members of the council. Questions for staff from the council, council members.
City Manager Trujan, could you please relate to the public, the need for this and as far as massage therapy licenses with the state of Minnesota?
So let me try and please fill in. So currently, the regulation of massage therapists and establishments are done at the city level. So there's two things there is the establishments or businesses that we want to make sure operate in a manner that provides the services and does not allow for any illegal activities. Unfortunately, rightly or wrongly, over time, establishments have been seen as a place where things can happen, such as prostitution and other things, and we try to define that in our purpose and findings and really articulate that a little bit more. That's the reason why we're here regulating massage therapy establishments. And whenever you talk about these things, you have a broad brush, and we know that there's numerous legitimate business owners in our community that are doing everything above board and well within the law. But unfortunately, there are some that most likely aren't, and we're not unique of that in Roseville. So we do have to have a position on how we enforce it to make sure illegal activity doesn't happen as we would do for any particular business. But given the dynamic of not just illegal activity, but the possibility of trafficking of persons, which can happen in establishments like this, as well as other facets of life, it's very important that we do have strong regulations to limit that possibility. In regards to the therapists, once again, locals, cities license, there's no overarching state regulation, although there's some legislation currently under consideration, hopefully will get considered. But it's extremely onerous when, I think in Roseville, we have about 100 massage therapists licensed with the city. And oftentimes, they may work for multiple cities and requires a lot of background checks and not knowing what's happening in different cities. And so it's quite difficult to really properly regulate massage therapists in a way to make sure that they're providing legal services and not running afoul of the law. And we will occasionally have people that will apply that we find out through our background checks did have a problem in a different city, but we just have to really work hard to get there. And so having more of a statewide approach would certainly help. But that's not where we are right now, so this is some of the reasons why we're trying to make sure that we have proper regulations in place to help us better enforce. Right now, and you'll hear from the chief, it is very difficult to monitor and charge situations that are where there's illegal activity happening for a variety of reasons, and she'll get into that. But we're feeling in the forefront, if we can do more to regulate and have proper documentation and clear standards of what we expect, we'll be better off than not having that. I think certainly the number of licenses do affect our ability to properly regulate that, so that's why we're bringing that forward. But overall, I think there is a strong public interest for the city and the community to make sure that businesses across the board are done legally and safely. And given the past history of massage therapy establishments, maybe long ago, maybe a lot of this change, there is still a need for us to continue to do that.
I think that's probably a good segue. The chief.
Working our way up here.
Perhaps, Mr. Trujan, you had neglected to include that as part of the presentation, but I think before we get too many more questions from the council, it makes sense to hear from the law enforcement perspective, so welcome, Chief Scheider.
Thank you. As was already mentioned, the enforcement of a business that comes in that's doing illicit massages or allowing it, it becomes really difficult. These cases take a lot of time. They're difficult to prove. Oftentimes, you know, if we try to stop somebody leaving these businesses, they're going to say, hey, nope, I just went for a massage. The victims, the people being trafficked are very, not trust, they don't trust law enforcement. And oftentimes, the owners of business may be holding on to their passport, they may owe them money. So it is really difficult to get cooperation to build a case. And so regulation on the front end to make sure we don't have illicit massage businesses coming into town is really the key. For waiting for them to, they're here and now we're trying to go and take enforcement action, it's just, it's a tremendous amount of resources. Even if you're able to shut down a business, they just could pop back up, whether it's in our community, hopefully not with some of those regulations, but we see that happening over and over again where they might close down in one city, they just go to another city and open up the business again. So anything we can do to make it tougher for these illegitimate businesses to come into town is really going to help us on the enforcement side.
Questions for the chief. Councilmember Ratten.
Thank you, chief, for bringing this forward here and being part of the presentation. One of the things that was brought up in our last time, maybe in July or whenever it was, was third-party inspectors. What discussion has happened at the staff hall around having someone else do some or all of these inspections versus our city staff or officers?
Councilmember Ratten, if I, I think it was around background inspection, background, background-ing, I should say.
Yeah, I'm not talking about investigation of certain things, but taking, part of this is a question about 100 therapists and how we track 100 therapists. And there's a separate part that is about enforcement, so how we pull those things apart. Are we able to pull those apart and have some work done not by our police officers, for example?
So I believe we don't really rely on them too often. There's a third-party portal that we have, the therapist enter in their information, and then we get the report back. They do the, this company does the background checks. So, but we do coordinate still with the police department to see if, first of all, if anything hits from that background check, what that is about, try to find more, and also if any knowledge they may have from other communities, just from the law enforcement network. But we already are using a third-party to do the background checks. So that's not taking much time directly on the 100 therapists, for instance, for them to do the background check.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Other questions for the chief? Councilmember Graff.
So if I'm hearing you right, we do have laws in place that would effectively make that behavior illegal already. We're talking about sexual trafficking. We're talking about probably immigrants that are being abused, but we're trying to do something else to enforce that law, which just seems a little backwards to me. So I'm wondering what laws are in place that already we're trying to enforce, but we're not able to?
Yes, so I think that the main thing that we're trying to do is to disrupt the business, the people actually profiting from this. You know, it's not about, we really view the people working in these establishments as victims. I mean, this isn't something that they wanted to do. They kind of get forced into it, coerced into it. Sometimes are, like, as you mentioned, they're immigrants, they're fearful of being, of not getting their passport back or not being able to work or not put food on the table. And so really, our focus in these investigations is disrupting the criminal enterprise, which is making a lot of money. There's a lot of money in this, but to do those kind of investigations take a tremendous amount of time. We're working on some of the human trafficking going on in our hotels right now, and it's literally going on about a year and a half investigation, and we're still not even to the top. So once you have one of these businesses in our city, it really becomes problematic to be able to shut them down if there is suspected illegal activity.
If I could just follow up and chief, jump in. So imagine the scenarios. If there's some legal activity going on, we may not be directly aware of it. The person receiving the illegal activity isn't going to be calling us, even if they felt they were, you know, charged too much for whatever that service is. The victims, as the chief says, aren't going to be calling because they'll be afraid of retribution. For us to do any enforcement, we can walk through a business and see things or not see things, and we do do that occasionally, but there's some obvious signs when things are happening. I won't get into the details, but you can figure that out pretty quickly, and that doesn't happen. If we were ever to try an undercover, which brings a whole level of complications, as you can imagine, that is most likely not going to be successful if we just walked in off the street. Oftentimes, there's established relationships between customers and therapists that things are worked out. When we have tried to, when we are aware of suspected activity and do stop people leaving the place, they deny anything happening there. We obviously don't have cameras, we don't have any other proof. So those are just some of the challenges. You have to take it case by case, and you try to do what you can, and there's such, we all wish we could do more, but it's really, really, really hard. And then on top of that, if you throw some type of misdemeanor charge on that in the court system, unfortunately, that's going to take a long time to get it resolved. So that's some of the challenges we face. We wish there was more. The mayor asked earlier today kind of what the police calls are for these places. These aren't like hotels where we have multiple people calling us all the time because of something happening there. We just don't get calls for reactive, we got occasional complaints, but they're literally, you can count on two hands that we typically get. Certainly investigatory things, if there is something that we're aware of, we do pay attention to that and do some follow-up, and obviously try to do proactive when we can. But it's a really, really a big challenge for us to do. So I understand we wish we could do more. It shouldn't just be as easy as just, you know, responding to calls and arresting the bad people and moving on, but that's just not the way, the dynamic, it's so underground, it's really hard to capture, and that's part of the frustration. So one of the reasons we're bringing the cap forward is to help minimize that as much as possible. Then there's a better ability to try to get your hands around any illegal activity that's happening and try to address it. But we do feel that up in the forefront, if we have some better regulations, that's another way to ensure going into it that it's very clear what the expectations are.
So how many complaints have we had or how many of these cases have we had come forward on the existing massage?
Very few direct complaints. We've got information a lot from like online searches, internet searches, information from other agencies like the BCA's Human Trafficking Task Force. We've received tips that come in that way, but very few, other than people frustrated because it's down the street from them and they see the neon signs, they see the clientele coming in and out, and they're frustrated that we're not doing things. But very rarely from the ones that we're concerned about are we getting any kind of somebody calling to complain. As the city manager mentioned, typically, it's the person going in to receive that service doesn't want anybody to know they were there. So even if something goes sideways, they're not going to call us. Even if we stop them, they're not going to tell us what happened. And these victims that are involved in this industry don't call either, you know, even if there's violence against them, even if, you know, they lose money, whatever might happen in that room, very rarely are the police going to get involved. And that's what takes these cases so long to put together is you almost have to build it without having an informant or somebody that comes forward with information or a victim. We just don't see that in these cases.
I'd like to follow up on this train of thought, though, because I think it kind of gets to the question that we're dealing with here, which is we've got two things being requested. One is to stiffen up our requirements and try to make it much more difficult for the bad actors to either operate the businesses and/or for people to get a therapist's license who shouldn't be getting therapist's licenses. And then there's the question of this cap, and the cap is only on the number of establishments. We don't, we're not proposing any kind of cap on the number of therapists in this proposal. It's just the number of establishments. I'm trying to understand, you know, of the, we have 24 licenses right now. Are there 22 bad actors and two good ones, or is it the other way around? I mean, and maybe we don't know real specifically, but I mean, the concern I have is that we put a cap of 10 and we still have the same five bad actors, and now we've only allowed five additional good businesses that we're not serving the needs of the community for the folks that are looking for the services provided, not to mention the fact that if we go down from 24 to 10, we are also essentially putting out a business, 14 businesses in the community over the next five years, which is very concerning, too, especially if those folks aren't contributing to the issues. So I don't know if, chief, if you have a response to that, but I think it definitely gets to the question that I'm trying to figure out through this process. This notion of capping the number of establishments doesn't make the crimes any easier to investigate. It doesn't necessarily make the establishments less likely to be potentially, you know, bad actors, but at the same time, you know, we've got all these other requirements we're putting in place that may get to that. So I'm trying to understand if we're just limiting the number of establishments because it makes for less staff time to process applications in the first place, I'm not necessarily sure that's getting at what we're trying to get at, so I'm trying to understand the rationale better. And I'd look to either the chief or the city manager to answer that. I don't want to put somebody on the spot who can't really respond to that.
Yeah, so it's hard to know an exact number. Across the country, they estimate about one in every five is what I've seen some statistics show of massage establishments are illicit massage businesses. So if you take that number in Roseville, whether it's five, six, or seven, any of those could be reasonable. Again, these are really hard to know, and so it, our hope is to, first of all, make it hard for these businesses to come to Roseville. If it's easy to come here, they're going to come set up shop here, and we know that they've been shut down in other communities because of stricter ordinances. When they're shut down, they go and try to find a different community where they're going to be under the radar. It really is a capacity issue. We only, these cases take a long time, and so the more cases you have, the more businesses that you're trying to investigate to try to get rid of some of these problem ones, it's going to take time. It's going to take a lot of resources.
Councilmember Ratten.
Thanks, chief, for that. I think you mentioned earlier that often it's at least fairly easy to know some of the establishments we're more concerned about. Is that fair to say that through some of the practices and watching businesses, we become aware of that? And it's your feeling that the regulations in here outside of the total number of establishments, the regulations are going to make it easier to prevent that establishment opening and then to enforce something later. Is that true?
These businesses are going to go somewhere where there's less regulations. It's easier to just kind of come in and set up, and I think that's why we've had some of them that have been in other cities, maybe a different owner, but family, connected by family. All of a sudden, we're connecting the webs and you realize kind of that same business was shut down somewhere else, and now they're here in Roseville. So having those stricter regulations is going to help so people don't come to Roseville. They'll go somewhere else where it's a little bit easier to get in the door, to get through all the licensing restrictions, and that's our hope.
Sort of. Are people relic, individuals getting relicensed each year?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So this is something that, within a year of passing, some of these regulations of having someone come in and having a local address, I mean, that would start to have an effect theoretically.
Okay.
Yes, and just to make you aware, so the licensing cycle goes from July 1st to June 30th. So if we were to pass something before that date and we were able to get the information out, it would start July 1st. All those folks would need to apply to the new standards, whatever they might be.
So my last question gets back to the third-party inspectors. Having third-party inspectors do the random checks in establishments to make sure these therapists that are there are posted and are licensed, is that something that we can move off of our own police department to a third party? I think that's the piece, understanding that licensing, background checks are handled electronically and separately. We have a little office time as people come in, but these checks saying, hey, we don't have time to go to 24 different establishments on a regular basis at all and check to make sure, yes, this person is, this person is on the wall and this person is registered by the city. Is that something we can hand off in some way to a third party?
We can certainly, we could certainly look at that. It gets complicated. You know, we went out and did one check on a complaint that we received, and we had to get translators to come in. We also had people who said they didn't have their IDs with them, so now we're stuck trying to, you know, do some data mining that a third-party, non-sworn person just wouldn't have that background. We also would be limited what information we could share with that person because a lot of these cases involve active cases, not just connected to a Roseville establishment, but there, it becomes a whole web, both at a state. but there, it becomes a whole web, both at a state and even international level. So some of that, absolutely, I think that there's some opportunities. There is some around the actual enforcement that really, I think you'd need to have a sworn law enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if I could just add, I think that's an excellent observation, that if we can leverage a third party to help, at least in some of the regulatory functions, to make that initial, say, okay, is everything here? And then when there is not, something that adds up, then we can involve law enforcement to maybe be the first part of that, because as we create these more stricter regulations, we need to make sure we follow up on them and make sure that they're followed.
We can enforce them.
Right, and so, you know, right now, we have very minimal standards, but now we would need to physically go out to the sites and having some assistance in doing that, I think would go a really long way in making sure that we would identify some problem actors and deal with the police department from there.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Shodder.
Chief, what, do you think there's a number of these bad apples out there possibly setting up shop even without getting a license? I mean, do you think there's a number of them aren't even bothering to get a license, and they're just doing it under the radar or trying to? Do you have any sense for that?
There may occasionally be ones that we run across without a license, but the majority of them are getting that license and trying to look legitimate, because they realize if they've got the license, the business is licensed, there's little that we can do.
That's their cover.
Correct. I mean, it's illegal activity that's literally happening kind of under this cover of being licensed by the city, and everything's on the up and up, and...
So it makes more sense for someone trying to be, do an illegal operation to get a license, whatever city that is, versus trying to set up shop under the radar?
Correct, especially for these types of businesses. Now, in our hotels, completely different, and in homes, it's a different scenario, but the businesses where you're, you know, it's an actual business with a name, you can Google search them.
I know, I was thinking about the hotels, actually. I imagine that's a whole different animal. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Strong.
I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Atten. I know that last time we had this come forward, one of the massage therapy location owners offered to serve as a third-party inspector and sit outside them and report people who thought that looked illegal, and I'm certain that doesn't fit into our parameters. I don't know, we never heard your response to that, but I was just, you know, I think it's important to mention that, because there could be all kinds of legal and ethical questions related to that, but I think it's probably important to follow up on that, because that was a question that was kind of left out there, and he was pretty persistent that that was, all we needed was someone like him to know who the bad people were as they were coming in and out.
Yeah, so the challenge becomes, I mean, we see the same thing, you know, we see this concerning behavior, but it's somebody going to a business that's licensed in the city, we can't just go up and start harassing people for going to a business. When we have tried to talk to people that maybe, that had just left the business, the answer is always the same, no, I just went and got a massage, and it's kind of a dead end there. So if you don't get somebody who's going to cooperate, and most of the time they will not, there's nothing we can do. I mean, we can't go and start harassing people just because it looks a little bit odd that they're getting a massage at, you know, over the lunch hour every day. It makes it really tricky in these cases. So we see the same thing, we see the same concerning behavior, we see the same issues that the neighborhoods are reporting to us, but being able to enforce that and be able to prove it is where it becomes really difficult.
And just as a follow-up, is it fair to say that the folks that are walking out that have received services, they're guilty of something as well in terms of criminal activity, and so that's why they're not necessarily forthcoming to share?
One of the reasons.
Yeah, one of the reasons. Councilmember Graff.
What about fire codes and using that as also a way to inspect the properties that are identified as problem properties?
That is certainly an option, you know, any of the building codes, that's another way to provide that, that kind of like, hey, we're paying attention to you, and we're going to make sure that you're operating the way that you should be. So anything that we can do for these businesses to know, we're paying attention. I think what you'll find over time is they're going to go somewhere else where it's just easier to kind of be under the radar, not have to worry about a lot of regulation, not have to have people coming in and inspecting them, and that's what we've found talking to other cities as well, since they've put in stricter guidelines, they're seeing, they're not seeing the same businesses trying to come into their community.
We certainly don't want to preclude the time for the public to speak as well, but I do have just a couple of sort of technical questions for staff. The, how the 600 hours of training was arrived at as the qualification? Can you talk just a little bit about that? Is that something that's based on best practices that you've researched and found elsewhere? And just as a help, I did notice that seems to correspond with what might be in the state legislation for licensing that was out there.
Right. I know that's been a standard that we've used for a long time. It's certainly a best practice. I'm not sure if there's any, I'm looking at Katie Bruno. It's something that's been established in multiple codes throughout cities, the 600 is the level of certification that we've determined qualifies as a massage therapist. But it's my understanding, it's pretty standard throughout cities, that's the number that they use.
So it's based on examples of other cities and their requirements?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the other piece of it is requiring it all at a single institution, is there an intent behind that? Because I can imagine that, you know, individuals may go to one or two different institutions over the course of their life changes or anything like that, that may lead them to have 600 hours, but it's over a couple of different institutions?
Right. How about Ms. Katie Bruno, our deputy city clerk, provide some response to that?
Hi, Mayor, Councilmember. Yes, that we recently added to this last ordinance, because we have had times where people come in where they have a portion of that, and then they will want to go quickly and get it somewhere else and then bring that certification in, saying that now, oh, now we have 600 hours, and it doesn't always seem like maybe that was legitimate, the way it came through.
And that...
Most courses that we see are like a 600 or 650-hour course is the way that they work.
And I think part of having a disjointed amount of hours from different schools and different things may be repetitive, it may not be as comprehensive as you would have from a program that has complete certification. And once again, I don't think we created this out of thin air, I think we looked at other ordinances as well, and we did notice that, we thought that was a good idea, just to make sure that there was something that was consistent training through an accredited institution.
I appreciate that clarification. And then as to the transfers, the way the, and I mentioned this to the city manager offline in a previous conversation, it appears that the way the ordinance is written right now, transfers are essentially prohibited after May 1st of this year.
No.
Or, excuse me, after the five-year period.
Yeah.
There's no more transfers at all, even if we're below the cap. And I just wanted to understand, was that the intent, or was that an oversight? Or, because I can imagine, once we're under the cap, do we really care if people do transfers at that point?
No, as long as we're under the cap, for sure. So if you, you know, the parallel is the liquor licenses, that we have a cap at 10. For many, many years, we were at that cap, and there was an inability for people to get a license, and oftentimes, they would maybe buy that business. We'd have to issue a new license, so temporarily, there was, instead of 10, there was nine. Here with 24, that's not, that's not going to be relevant until we get to 10 or below, and then if there's ever, you know, less than 10, if we have eight, somebody with a license application come in, we could approve that.
It may be something, if we decide to continue with the cap, that we want to address more clearly in the language.
I can see that, yeah.
So just wanted to note that. Anything else of, oh, and I did want to just, once again, we did mention the state statutes being under consideration at the legislature, and that for folks who may be interested to find out, that's House File 973 and Senate File 967, and I took a quick look at those this afternoon, and they appear to be pretty much the same between the two. And it appears they've been referred, I don't know further where the status is on those particular bills, but it is something that has been something that the city has been advocating for at the legislature because of the difficulty in licensing, especially the therapists. And to be clear, the state laws that are being considered are for therapist licensing, not for establishment licensing. They have particular language in them that specifically continues to allow cities to license establishments, and there's no licensing at the state level for those, so just to clarify that as well. With that, unless there's anything else from council for questions or clarifications, we'll ask Ms. Shodder and the chief to have a rest for a moment, and we'll introduce the opportunity for public comment. And I don't know that we all answered or asked all our questions prior to the comment, but I think part of what we learned from the public comment is more questions. And so one of the things that I'll be doing is trying to make a note of any questions that come up that we can try to address as a response, once we're done with the public comment period, and I appreciate any questions that are out there. But the process, basically, for public comment by city rule, by city council rule, is that we allow about three minutes per speaker, and I try to enforce that as gently as I can. So if you just want to say, I agree with previous speakers, that's a great way to be under the time limit, but you can also say quite a bit in three minutes, surprisingly, so don't feel too self-conscious about being able to say what you want to say. The other thing is, is that we ask that folks address their comments or questions to the city council, and then, and not maybe to specific staff members or individuals or people in the audience, but rather just address your comments or questions to the council. We will, as I mentioned, we'll make a note of questions that come up that we need to try to answer once we're done with the public comment period. The other thing is, we ask that you begin your comments with your name, and if you're a Roseville resident, either your address or street. If you're owner of an establishment in Roseville, you can mention the name of that by way of identifying yourself. And then, once you're done with your comments, if your name is one that may not be something that somebody like me could try to spell without seeing it written out, we do have a clipboard, and we can just have you maybe step off to the side once you're done with your comments, and maybe when the next person starts, and then you can just write your name down for the record, and we'll have that to make sure it's spelled correctly in our official record of the meeting. But that way, it won't necessarily take up time that you could be used making your comments to fill in the name, you can do that off to the side offline. The other thing I'll note is that if we have a lot of people who wish to speak, we do have the two chairs and the two microphones, and so as one person is making their comments, don't hesitate to come up and have a seat if you're willing to make the next comment, and be prepared to get started right once the previous person is finished. And likewise, if you want to be sort of in the queue, you can sort of scout out a spot in one of the front seats in the audience there to be next, so to speak, to beat the next person up to the chair. The other thing I do want to note is that this is meant for information gathering and to hear from the public. It's not an opportunity to cheer for people, or to boo people, or to otherwise have commentary on the comments or questions that are being asked or made. This is, once again, it's a business activity of the city, and so we want to make sure that everybody is, has a fair opportunity to be heard and respected, no matter what they have to say, because it's not unusual for folks in participating in these discussions to have different points of view. So we want to make sure that everybody is respectful in that regard. And once again, for people participating online, once we get into the public comment, this will be your opportunity to use that raise-your-hand feature and let us know, and we'll try to get those comments that are mixed with the folks who are here in the room with us this evening. And so with that, I believe I've covered all the rules of the road, and hopefully you remember half of them, but we'll consider that a success, and I'll try to be gentle once again in my enforcement, but we'll open it up now for public comment on the proposed ordinance changes that have been brought forward and discussed up to this point this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers, we're so, we appreciate being here today. My name is Amy Adams, and I am the owner of the Woodhouse Spas in Minnesota. The reason I'm here today is because some of the regulations we are very excited about. Having additional regulation to this industry in this municipality is really important for our business. In other municipalities of which we operate, we do have similar requirements for our therapists and for our licensing as an establishment, and I believe that elevates our business as a spa with massage therapy as one of those many services that we provide, but also elevates the profession of our massage therapists. We've been watching at the state level many of the regulatory things that are happening, because we are also licensed at the state level with the Board of Cosmetology. Many of the things that you have discussed today, we go through routinely. As professionals in this industry, the Board of Cosmetology is over our esthetician practices, which covers all of our facial services, as well as our nail technicians and all of our nail services. We are inspected a minimum of every year by a state-assigned representative that comes into our businesses unannounced. As you discussed previously, they match the license on the wall to the salon manager. We have a professional salon manager at each of our locations, as well as inspecting our esthetician, not only our facilities, but also matching the name on the name tag to the government ID and to the license on the wall. That protects our staff, it protects our guests, and it elevates the quality and safety of our services. These regulations that you have related to the 600 hours, that is a wonderful addition, because these institutions that provide massage therapy education are wonderful in Minnesota, they're wonderful nationwide, and truly, it's often a hang-up for applicants that we have that aren't able to prove or establish their profession. For us, that protects us as a business. It protects our clientele, and we appreciate that very much. As it relates to coordination with each of our municipalities that we currently work with, we work very closely in making sure that individuals that we interview and hire are qualified for these positions. In addition, once they have, once they have completed a national background check, and these are very difficult background checks, they can take as much as a month, depending on how many residences these individuals have, we then put them through a very rigorous training internally. We have protocols. We also have a franchisor at the national level that ensures that the services that we are providing as a spa with over 70 luxury resort services are safe, not only from a hands-on perspective, but also from a sanitation and a safety perspective. As an owner, I am not a massage therapist, and so I truly appreciate when municipalities take these regulations seriously, but unfortunately, in Roseville, we are looking to open a business this year that will not be able to open because of the caps and because of us being under the umbrella of a massage therapy license only. We are a spa. I open spas because I'm a mom and I'm a professional, and I had everything in my life, ever so lucky, everything in my life except for balance and time for myself. We are not only a one-service massage therapy business, we are an escape, we are a place to celebrate. It's where friends meet. We come to Maple Grove or Woodbury, and we have our spa services, and then we go to dinner, and then we see a movie, or we might go to a restaurant that evening. We also frequent hotels. We are in the celebration and self-care business, and I'm very concerned that some of the caps...
I'm going to have to ask you to finish your thought here.
Sorry, I'm just concerned that some of the caps will not allow us to open a beautiful flagship, almost 7,000-square-foot facility in Rosedale, to elevate the experience for our residents, to foster self-care, and to continue to grow a beautiful community in Roseville.
Thank you.
Just real quickly, I'm Mark Adams, Amy's husband, co-own the woodhouses in Minnesota, and everything that you said about the lack of state guidance in this is absolutely correct. As a business owner, that makes our job in terms of due diligence, where we're going to invest next, very important. And even in the Twin Cities, not every municipality licenses at all. When we opened our first one, we went to where we felt was the most stringent. Second one, most stringent, Woodbury and Maple Grove are very, very good in this space. As we looked, we settled on, we identified locations all over the city, Rosedale, we love from the demographics, really the lack of experience in this area, and the fact that the city council was taking this seriously. I'd say 99% of what you showed today, I'm extremely in favor of. The 1% that I'm not is the cap, because we're looking to make a very substantial investment in this market, and I cannot do that as a business owner if there's a risk that I can't be licensed because of a cap. I'd be out of business before I went in business. And I'm so happy that we heard of it now, because we're literally on the eve of signing a lease, and I need to make sure that we understand, are, you know, for a material portion of our business, are we going to be able to be licensed? Minus that, I can't make the investment. If I could, I'd love to leave behind just some information, give you a taste of what we are bringing to this community, which is going to be amazing. We've been in business since 2016. We operate some of the most successful woodhouses in the country, and we're looking to put our flagship here. This is going to be a step above and beyond what Maple Grove, what Woodbury have. I couldn't be more excited. So I'd love to share this with you, you can look at it at your leisure, but that would be the one part of the regulations I would request that we take a second look at.
Great, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And you can leave that with Mr. Treacher.
Okay.
Good evening, councilmember.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Lisa Crane. I am the general manager at Rosedale Center. I work on behalf of the ownership of the center. We understand the purpose of the proposed ordinance, and encourage the continued enforcement of illegal behavior in massage therapy establishments. However, there needs to be consideration for operators that are professional, reputable operators in our communities, and provide strict training and education regiments for their employees. This is Woodhouse Spa, which encompasses these traits. They follow a strict franchise business model, that requires additional training, reporting, guidelines with their daily operations. We have been courting Woodhouse for over two years, to come to our shopping center, because of their reputation, luxurious spa services, and their impeccable amenities. The spa will provide experiential services that has significant economic impact to the center, and curates our leasing efforts to attract unique and destination retail concepts. This type of tenant will provide more impact to our tenants, since it will draw groups of people that have not been able to enjoy self-care at the top-level tier within Roseville. More importantly, these groups will be utilizing the spa for major milestone events, such as birthdays, anniversaries, girl weekends, or just routine self-care. The residual dollars that will generate, not just for Rosedale Center, but will financially impact the surrounding hotels, restaurants, and entertainment venues, and other retail surrounding us. Woodhouse has a service experience Roseville does not offer, and requires our shoppers to visit outside of our community to enjoy. These service places, such as Nisswa, Wayzata, Stillwater, and of course Downtown Minneapolis. The new ordinance will impact Rosedale Center from engaging in any lease agreements with a luxurious spa salon. This is a missing experience that have been carefully selected to complement our exceptional retailers, such as Baltimore, Lululemon, Warby Parker, of course, our Potluck and Anthropology, and the new flagship store coming in called Dick's Sporting Goods. Roseville continues to evolve with new retail concept, customer experiences, and making financial commitments to do our business, that has made us one of the best retailing locations in the Twin Cities. We agree there needs to be consequences or revoking license to massage establishments that continue to operate illegally. Myself and Amy would be more than willing to meet with any council members to discuss those changes. There needs to be considerations for businesses that operate at an exceptional level of professionalism, and provide multiple spa services, such as pedicures, manicures, and luxurious services. We were unaware of these changes being made with this ordinance, and have appreciated city staff bringing this to our attention last week. However, we are faced with a critical timing issue, since the lease is in the final stages of execution, with Woodhouse wanting to open for the holidays. We provided language changes to the proposed ordinance, that would take into the consideration these type of operators I have described. The information was submitted by email on Friday, and should be in your packets. I have extra ones here, too. Thank you for your time this evening, and we look forward with working with you.
Thank you. And before our next speaker, I'll just check, are there any hands up in the-
There are none.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Lauer, and I'm the owner and sole proprietor of Healing Wings Massage and Energy Work, here in Roseville. I started massage in 2015, in St. Paul, Minnesota, here. And I worked for a wellness center for five years, before opening up my business here in Roseville, which was always my dream, not to work for someone, but to have my own space, where I could have my own feel, and express who I was, as a healer and a practitioner. I'm really proud of what I did. I started my business in 2020, January. It was awesome, for two months. And then, of course, I was shut down, like everybody else in our business, for two and a half, or two and a half months. But I started back up, and slowly and slowly, came to full speed. And now I'm just so proud that I have a full schedule. I'm booked out for at least two months at a time. And our work is really, really important. People need our touch. People need the therapy that we offer. Again, as with a lot of the other speakers, I like almost everything in this. But more massage is needed, and to put the cap at 10 is not a good thing. It's going to stop other people who have maybe come out as students, who are just now getting back into massage. I think a lot of the schools were also hit really hard. So people are maybe now going into massage, graduating now, and looking for their own way, their own opportunities to start their own business. And it would just be really sad if they weren't able to have that, like I had. So, I ask you to reconsider the cap of 10. Another thought was to maybe have something separate for sole proprietors. I think that would help with the regulation. I think a lot of the concern is with having a lot of different therapists, or fake therapists under one business. But if it's just me, it's really easy to come in and inspect me. I mean, there's nothing to hide here. So, that would be my comment, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Hello, and welcome.
Hi, I'm Toni McCloney. I am the owner of Optimal Wellness Solutions. We are right down the hall from Rachel. And Rachel works with some of our therapists. I think they barter trade services. Yeah. So, if you cap it at 10, we're basically 2 of 10. So, that only allows eight more facilities in the entire city. I actually don't understand that. I understand, like the other speakers have said, 99% of what you're doing is great with the regulation. The cap is a problem. We were just through a health crisis in the last three years. People are conscious of their health and wellness, and they are going to be reaching out more to people that are providing alternative care, and utilizing salons. And we, if anything, need more legitimate services in Roseville, not less. I'm not going to pretend like I know the answer, but I can assure you that topping the, you know, capping it at 10, even I saw the number 25, and I was like, that seems really low. So, if you have 25 now, that licenses, did I hear that? Did I hear that correctly? There's 25. So you cap it at 10, so there are 14 businesses, there are 14 businesses that are going out of business. How are you going, how are you deciding who's getting axed? I just bought this business two years ago. The other issue I have is, I bought the business two years ago. So, I would like to be in this line of work for at least 10, 20 more years, but what you're telling me now is, if we're capped, I can't sell it? I don't know. There must be another solution, because the cap doesn't make a lot of sense to me. We want to be, we want to be attracting business, like, we want to be attracting that to Roseville. We don't want to be limiting business. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment? And Mr. Trechard, do we have any hands raised online?
We do not, no.
All right. See, we've got another in-person comment.
Roger Hess, in Wagner Place. And yeah, great to make sure everyone that's working in Roseville in this area is, you know, legitimate, which, you can easily do that without destroying the whole industry. You don't need to limit the number, you just need to get rid of the bad old people. And right now, the industry is supporting 24 locations. If you knock it down to 10, where are all these clients going to go? I mean, people need massage. Some people have injuries where they need massage. Where do you want them to go? Do they want them to go 50 miles away to relieve their pain, or what? I'm not sure what, how cutting down the number of places is going to help. And you have, you can easily, when the people come to get their license, or individual therapists, have them meet with your cat people. They can pretty much decide, figure out, if someone seems they're being trafficked or prostitution, or whatever. And then you can do like you're doing with the alcohol. If like she's, like the police chief said, they come in there, they don't have their ID, and whatever, fine, then that's a violation. Every person that doesn't have their ID, match up with the license, everything, that's $1,000 fine, and one day that they don't work. If they got five people working there, and none of them have their IDs, that's $5,000, and five days they can't work. That'll weed these people out very quickly. And I have a couple of things to fill me out. Under your definition on 30902, about massage therapy, it says, "Only can be used for relaxation, physical fitness, or beautification, no other purpose." That doesn't include people that actually have a physical injury, in a car crash or something, and they need help. I know one therapist, all she does is insurance cases. And they're all from injuries of some sort, falling down, or car crash, or whatever. That's not listed there. I don't consider physical fitness as being fixed from getting hurt and injury. So you really should update that. And there's a lot of things that need to be updated, it seems. I understand the 600 hours, and everyone should have complete documentation about their education, but I'm sure many of the people on the council here have gotten post-secondary education, and not all of it was done at the same institute, whether it's college, or whatever. So, you know, continuing education, or whatever, I'm sure you don't do it all the same in place. As long as they have certified from legitimate schools, I don't know why they all have to be at the same school. Lots of people go one place. They might start out in California, come to Minnesota, finish up with the last 200, 300 hours. They, you know, not everyone does it right in one place. Then, under 30905-D7, it talks about that you can lose your license, even if just charged with a crime, not being convicted. I mean, that doesn't seem quite right. If I'm a therapist, and someone goes out and says, "Oh, I offered to do whatever, but I didn't do it, and I'm proven innocent, when I've lost my license." That doesn't make sense either. You should have to be proven, you know, it's supposed to be innocent, so you're proven guilty.
You're at about three and a half minutes now, so if you-
Okay. Just about two more things.
How about one more thing?
Okay. It says you need to display your license and color photo on the premises. So that means you could lock it in a closet. It should really be out front, where everyone can see it. And also, one other thing, is that it says you have to be staffed during all the hours that are posted. But what happens if you have post-hours, 8 to 9, but you only do work when you have appointments? You don't allow walk-ins? And you don't have any appointments that afternoon? Why would you have to stay there for five or six hours, when you have nothing to do? Or what if there's a power outage? And what happens if a tornado's warning? Okay, it says you have to be there. It doesn't make any sense. Why would you have to be somewhere, when you've got nothing to do? And there's a lot of things in here, there's a lot of things in here you need to think about a lot more. But mainly is, you need to figure out a way to get rid of the bad people, without destroying the industry. And there's no reason, I still haven't heard anything about how many actual arrests we've had in Roseville. And it seems like each one's-
Thank you for your comments.
-contributing $1,000 a year, at least. So you can afford a lot of enforcement.
Right. Any other members of the public wish to speak? The online folks? All right, no hands, one more opportunity. All right, thank you again to everybody who's participated here, and provided feedback and input, both through email contacts, as well as the testimony this evening. We'll therefore close the opportunity for public comment on this item, and return to council consideration. I think the, sort of the biggest question that the council has before us, is the question about capping the number of establishment licenses or not, or what the cap should be, if we do have one. And so I think that that might be the first subject area that we may want to try to tackle, because perhaps some of the others may flow from that, or may be easier to tackle. So, Councilmember Strong.
I actually think it's more important that folks know, that this is not a new ordinance. This is actually already in place. There is an ordinance in place, so there seemed to be some misconception. Don't pass the, we actually already have an ordinance in place, and right now, the limit is 24. So, I think it's really important, especially since we have 24, that everyone understands that that's where, that's the starting point. Because then, if we talk about different things and caps, that's where we already are.
Thoughts from councilmembers? Especially as it relates to numbers of establishment licenses? If we can try to get to that point, and then see if we can address some other things that might be out there? Councilmember Graff?
Well, I'm very concerned with the caps, especially after hearing these very legitimate business people talk about their businesses, how this would affect them. This is exactly the thing I don't like to see government getting involved in, over-regulating things that probably are trying to solve a problem with the wrong answer. So, having heard this, and not having any hard data about how many arrests we've had, or how many cases we've had inspected, I don't favor a cap right now. That's my opinion.
And that, would that be then going away from the 24 cap?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. Wanted to clarify that point. Other thoughts from councilmembers? Councilmember Adams?
I would agree with much of what he said. I'm not sure around no cap, but I'm not prepared to reduce the number at this time at all, for reasons that have been stated from multiple folks. I am very interested in the 99% that the business owners appreciate here, and that I appreciate a lot of this, in giving additional tools to our staff, and our police department, to ensure that there are quality, safe businesses, and the people in the businesses are healthy and safe.
Their thoughts? Councilmember Strong?
Thank you. I wanted to echo Mr. Hess's concern, that I think a charge should not equal a revocation. That would be, to me, that seems like that could be a situation where someone could do that maliciously, to try to get a license, so I'm not comfortable with that. The one transfer in a five-year period, again, I struggle with that. I am not in a position to change the cap, also because I don't feel comfortable adding additional for one business right now, because that certainly can be seen as preferential, because they came forward and they were the loudest. That does not seem fair to say, "Oh yeah, we'll add one more for you." I feel like, I've said this many times, our time here is four years of jury duty. And so we're just trying to make sure things are the same, and that they're equitable, and that we would have the same answer for you, as you, as you. And so, I'm comfortable leaving the cap right now, but I think the understanding also needs to be that this does not include clinics, or chiropractic massage things. And that, we are not forcing 14 businesses to go out of business. It is, the goal is eventually to get a 10 cap, or whatever the cap is. But we're not forcing a business today to go, just be done. So that, just to understand that that, and obviously, that impacts long-term health of your organization, if you're trying to sell it in the future. But we are not going to selectively decide which ones exist and do not, as of tomorrow. So, but I think my biggest struggle is just saying that it's okay to add a license for one business. Right now, I'm not comfortable changing it, just so that it positively impacts one location, even though we don't have many good things to offer.
Right. Councilmember Shoder?
It was, I was really glad to hear that everyone was in support of stricter regulations around things. I think we can actually end up doing better law enforcement with these stricter regulations. So when we go into these places, we have more teeth to be proving these things. So that, I'm very much in support of the tighter regulations, and maybe even go further on some of that. And I, you know, I'm a little concerned about the transferring piece. To me, that, so if I bought a business, and I put all my money into it, and my only retirement now is to sell this business, and now I'm restricted from doing that, what other business do we do that to? To me, I think that's, you know, you have someone who's, you know, played by the rules, did everything we required, and all of a sudden, now we're changing the rules, and said, "No, never mind, you can't sell and transfer that license." I guess I'm having trouble with that, because I feel we're penalizing people on that. And the, limiting the number, it seems so arbitrary to me, you know, these numbers. I'm all for having well-established, good businesses come into Roseville, and, you know, and I appreciate the thought about, do you have owner- and I appreciate the thought about, do you have owner, operator as a separate class versus, you know, when you have multiple employees? I don't know how you would look at that. But I do think, you know, trying to limit that, I think with, you know, councilmember Graff made the comment, are we trying to solve, what are we trying to solve the problem with? And I think the stricter regulations is a better way to do that. And then one minor point that Mr. Hess brought up, I do, about the, what is a massage therapy? I do think we need to put in there, you know, we say relaxation, physical fitness, beautification and/or for health, or something like that.
Rehabilitation or something like-
Yeah, something where, yes, you know, and that, I think that makes a lot, you know, sense to update that. So I mean, so I am struggling with the cap number. That's, I am struggling with that.
I would say I join with councilmember Graff in probably being the most radical about the, about the cap in terms of not even having a cap. I, and I have raised this question throughout the process, and I think he hit the nail on the head, is what are we, what is this tool solving? And I think, I think we heard very much from people in the industry that everything else that we're trying to do with this ordinance is aimed at and will likely be successful to a greater degree in terms of resolving the issues that are out there in the industry than the cap. And I personally, if the council decided that the cap should be 25 or 24, that's what it is and it impacts certainly somebody who may be trying to bring a business into the community, and I completely understand that, but that's the rules of the road and it's been that way since November of last year. And so, as was pointed out, that's what it is. But, you know, where I come down on it is that I don't know that I agree that the cap, even where it is, is appropriate and that we can address a lot of the issues with the other, the other things that are in this proposed ordinance related to regulation and training and licensing and some things like that. So that's where I come down on the issue of the cap. It seems that there is a majority of the council, at least, moving towards not going to 10, I believe. And perhaps we can talk about whether we keep the existing cap in place or not, but there's some question as to whether that's supported on the council. Councilmember Strong.
Could we connect with the chief on what it would mean if there was an unlimited cap?
Chief.
You know, excuse me, it comes down to resources. We obviously have limited resources and so if you're asking us to continue to try to weed out an unlimited number, it just makes it difficult. So it's, it really would, it comes down to resources.
And prior to November of last year, or what was the, the earlier ordinance?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. We didn't have any kind of cap.
Correct.
And we had basically 25 licenses. And it fluctuated a little bit, I'm sure, around there. Thank you, chief. So like I said, it seems that there's some consensus on the council toward not going to 10 and potentially not, not having the cap as part of our ordinance, but I need clarification perhaps from one or two councilmembers in that regard to understand that better, because right now it seems like there may be two no-cap people and I'm not sure about if there's a third. How's that? So-
You haven't decided?
No, I, I think councilmember Graff and I are the no-cap people as I, as I'm reading-
You want me to clarify my standup?
Perhaps.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mayor, is it possible at this point, because there are so many options, that we could bring this back with some of the, there's so many revisions and so many contradictions?
Oh, I don't think there's any question it's going to come back.
Yeah. We're not ready to make a movement.
No.
So could it be tabled for this evening then?
I'm not sure I'm ready to table it. I think we need to have some more discussion to guide staff as to what needs to come back.
I can clarify where I stand on that.
Councilmember Schroeder.
If that would be helpful.
That would be helpful.
I, you know, again, I think the number is kind of a random number. So at this point, I would be comfortable lifting the cap, but making sure when we do that, we're also making the regulations very restrictive. So I think the combination of the two will get to where we want to get. So I would be in favor of lifting the cap.
All right. That helps to clarify. Thank you. So that starts to provide some guidance, I think, as to what we might be bringing back. We already did have the note about the adding something to the effect of injury rehabilitation or something like that to the definition of massage therapy. I think that seems to be pretty well supported by members of the council. Maybe talk about, a little bit about the-
Transfer?
The, well, no, I think if there's no cap, the transfer issue goes away. Transfers would be allowed, and I think the language that limits it would be strict.
We'll just take that.
Because it's a moot point. Because the only purpose of the limit on transfers was to help get the numbers down to the cap.
That would be struck.
The notion of the conviction versus charge on criminal activity, I kind of understand the notion that if somebody is charged with something, we may want to at least, at least on a temporary basis, limit their ability to continue to serve the public in that way. But I will defer to our city attorney in that regard.
Thank you, mayor. Just to explain what that language means to me. What it means is not that if someone is charged, we can take their license away. It means that we could bring an action on their license on the basis of those facts. The burden of proof in a criminal courtroom is beyond a reasonable doubt. The burden of proof to remove a license is preponderance of the evidence. So even though someone may not be found guilty in a court, we still may have enough evidence to prove that that happened. And the city would be held to that burden of proof before it could take a license action. So it's not, oh, you were charged, you lose your license. That's not how it works. We would still need to have a sufficient factual basis to defend that action.
And as I understand it, there's different levels of action that could be taken. It could be a revocation, it could be a suspension. I suppose it could be considered at the next renewal or something along those lines as well.
It could be. And that, of course, those license actions, I think, all come back before this council to approve, so.
There's due process associated with that.
Yes.
Just to clarify, so the establishment licenses do come back to the council? The therapist licenses?
Therapist licenses are staff.
Are staff.
Good point.
Yeah. Very good point. But we would use the same level.
But there's an appeal process.
Is there an appeal process?
Right. Okay. So there's still that due process. So it seems like the existing language is okay to continue with?
So the appeal process would come to the council? Or how does that appeal process?
It depends on, if it's a staff decision, I don't know that it comes back.
It comes to me.
Comes to, ultimately, people always have the ability to sue the city over any action that the city takes, whether it's staff or the council. Not that we encourage that sort of thing. All right. Other aspects of this or notes that people had of things they wanted to look at or ask for potential changes in the language from the council? Councilmember Brad.
I would love for our staff to follow up with some of these businesses that we know are more reputable about the single institution licensing. I'd love to see more of that from people who are actually in the industry, they didn't actually mention it, so maybe it's all cool. So I don't know that. But let's check and do a little more background on that. And I think to Mr. Hess's note on having to be staffed during the posted hours, it's must be staffed during those hours. I don't know that that line, it's line 307 to 308 is needed, but that we, the important part of that is the establishment may only provide services during the business hours, which must be posted on the door. Fine. That makes sense to me. So there isn't extra activity happening later outside of inspection times or things of that. But that next part, I would need to understand more at this point. It does seem kind of strange.
Yeah, we can talk about that. I think it was mobility, so we know when we can go to see when the things are being operated. If it's by appointment only, we don't have access to that information, so we don't know.
They should still post the hours of their available appointments or something like that.
Maybe. Think about something that gets towards that. Sure. At this point, it could be, especially for sole proprietor who's got appointments till seven and, sorry honey, I'm not coming home. Look at, they're already sad.
They probably need a massage. It's too easy. Anything else from the council in regard to the proposed language that's out there? I think the only thing that I did notice as I was glancing through the state statutes, both actually the chapter 146A, which is brought up by a member of the public and through an email to us, but then also the proposed language for specifically licensing the therapists. The exceptions that they indicated in, which would be in R 309.03, and I'm on the non-strikeout, so the second attachment, attachment D, this would be in the area of lines like 110 through 114, and I'm not sure if it needs to be in 104 through 109. But we list medical professionals licensed under chapters 147 and 148. The state statutes, both, I think both 146A and the proposed licensing actually include chapter 150, which is actually dental medical professionals, and that is allowed under, you know, both 146, which is the more broad, as well as the proposed language for licensing massage therapists. So I would suggest that we be consistent with that and consider adding chapter, or section, chapter 150. And double-check that I'm not wrong about that, obviously, but that's how I was reading. Anything else from the council? Councilmember Brad.
I think to that point, from the email from the public, is ensuring that we are aligning with whatever that state law is or own posting or information to customers and things like that, that we're making sure we're not just coming up with something that makes sense, but something that follows that as it's outlined. And it may all change in a month or something.
If they've passed something, yeah.
All right. Yeah. So.
Right.
So I believe I have the notes to bring back. It'll come back on the 24th of April. We have, do have a meeting next week, but it's a work session with one topic. So it'll give us time to make sure it is correct. So just to be clear, as of now, the cap is still in effect until there's an ordinance changed. So we'll have to finish that project, process, I should say, before anything else moves forward. But I think I got clear instructions and what to bring back and for you to consider.
And I believe, as it's currently written, the enactment or enforcement date was going to be May 1st. So depending on how that relates to our action on the 24th, we may have to make an adjustment. Or was that specifically to the transfer period?
That was the transfer period. So typically, our ordinances take place once it's published.
Right. Got it.
It'd be close to the 1st.
So just for folks who may be making business decisions between now and the end of this month, the current status quo is in effect, which is the 24 limit. The direction from the council to staff is to eliminate that limit going forward.
Got it.
All right. Anything else from the council on this? All right. Thank you, everyone, for a substantive discussion. I appreciate all the work that's been done by staff getting us to this point. Ms. Bruno, Chief Scheider, City Manager Trudgeon, and a number of other people that work behind the scenes on this, and certainly appreciate the input from members of the public and especially those who are in the industry throughout both this testimony as well as information that's been provided outside of the meeting to the council as well. We can certainly urge folks to continue to help us with this process as they see fit and we'll try to incorporate everything we've heard and everything we continue to hear into the process. Thanks again. With that, we're at our eight o'clock hour. I do want to check with the council, do we need to take our traditional eight o'clock break or are we able to proceed with the rest of the agenda?
Let's take a quick break.
Five-minute break?
Yeah.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break. We're back from a short break here, and proceeding on with our agenda, our third business item under that portion of our agenda this evening is item 7C, which is to consider appointments to the Finance and Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commissions. I appreciate staff updating the information that was provided in the original staff report to correct both the term numbers and partial term dates and whatnot, as well as the applicants that are under consideration. So thank you to staff for that. And then also, we have then before us the consideration of two vacancies, one for a partial term and one for a full term on the Finance Commission, and four vacancies, two for partial terms of different lengths and two for full terms. On the Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission, we did interview two of the three most recent applicants for those commissions last week at a special meeting, and hopefully, councilmembers have had a chance to connect with the third applicant related to Human Rights Inclusion Engagement Commission, which is under consideration. And I would also note that, in the case of each commission, one of the vacancies is actually as a result of a very recent resignation on each commission that happened after this process began. So we actually were originally planning on having fewer vacancies to fill, but then those resignation decisions were made, and that's what gets us to some partial terms to think about this evening. With that, I'm going to sort of, unless staff has anything, by way of introduction, I'll turn it over to the council for council's thoughts. Councilmember Strawn.
I would like to motion that we fill the slate with the candidates available, and we can decide how we handle partials versus full, but I feel like we had two opportunities to hear folks.
Perhaps, given that we do have to specify individuals for terms rather than phrasing it as a motion, how about we talk about it as the proposed suggestion?
Certainly. I'd like to propose Karen Durff as a partial, so that she has opportunity to complete two full terms at a later time if she were to choose, and Joe Tupi as a full. And in the same regard for HRIIC, I'd like to consider Gina Vomhoff for a partial term of ending in 2024, Will Hill ending in 2025, and Elliott Frankie and David Tidball each filling in a full term.
That sounds like a motion. Is there a second to that motion to make those appointments as outlined?
I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Groff, to appoint the applicants as listed, specifying on the Finance Commission, Mr. Roth for the partial term, and on the Human Rights Inclusion Engagement Commission, Ms. Gorong Vomhoff for the 24-ending term, and Mr. Hill for the 25-ending term. A discussion on the motion is the maker of the motion, Councilmember Strawn.
I know that our goal is usually to have double the amount of people, but we've had a number of retirements and resignations of late. We have offered two full filing periods to obtain folks, and I still think we were really, we had a great bunch of people with a lot of wonderful skills, and I think they, I hate to have our commissions operating at so much lower than their full capacity. I think it would be nice to, I think each of these folks would bring out different sets of skills that would be a good asset to their team.
And as the secondary, Councilmember Groff.
Well, I agree with that, and then also, I just remember Councilmember Schroeder said last time it says "may," you know, so we may have double, but we don't have to have double. It's not in our ordinance, so I think we're following the best practices that we have available.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Schroder?
My point is, I did not get an opportunity, William Hill did not make it to the interview, and so I never got an opportunity to interview him, so I guess I don't feel I can vote on that particular one, since I never interviewed him.
Do you wish to move to separate that part of the question?
Well, I'm just...
Separate vote on that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm sure he's fine, but like I said, you know, just for, you know, my own, I think it's my due diligence on my side, I felt like I should have been able to interview him, so I'm not saying he's not appropriate for it, I just don't feel that I should be the one voting for that particular one, so if we could carve that one out separately.
Okay. So Councilmember Schroder makes a motion to separate the consideration of Mr. Hill's appointment. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion to separate? I think it's perfectly reasonable, unless there's any objection. All those in favor of separating the vote for Mr. Hill signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes unanimously, so we'll take up the motion minus Mr. Hill, unless there's other requests to separate any consideration. All right. There's no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion to make all the appointments, with the exception of Mr. Hill, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
All right, it passes four to zero, I believe, with one abstention from Councilmember Schroder. Thank you, everyone, and we should reach out right away to those appointed folks and see if we can get them here on Wednesday night for their new council, new commissioner training, maybe?
And there's a Finance Commission meeting tomorrow.
All right. So those two folks are going to be like baptism by fire.
We're ready to, we talked to them.
All right.
You didn't know what you guys were going to do, but we're ready.
Excellent. Well, I think we might, hopefully, we gave you a little bit of a heads up on that, too, so. All right. With that, then, that brings us to consideration of a slew of city minutes, council minutes from the 6th, the 13th, the 20th, and the 4th of April, as well as EDA minutes from March 13th. Were there any additional comments, corrections, or changes needed from members of the council, or perhaps a motion to approve all of them? Councilmember Atten.
I'm going to move to approve all of them with a note, well, I'll do that later. Approve it.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Schroder. Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Atten is the maker of the motion.
I would like to note that I actually was not at the April 4th meeting, but the minutes are rigorous, and I watched the interviews, and I feel that I'm okay. But slash, they're not rigorous, and there's nothing there because it was interviewed.
It was just a list of candidates, right?
Yes.
But if you wish the official record not to indicate that you were present, we should probably correct the official record.
It doesn't say I'm there.
Oh, okay. I thought, my impression was that you had said that it listed you were there, so you're just saying you're okay approving them, even though you...
I don't need to abstain from this one.
Oh, thank you. Well, we just, we just almost took as much time dealing with that question as it would take for you to abstain, and I apologize for that. That was on me. With that, we have a motion before us to approve all of the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Those minutes are approved. That then brings us to the consent agenda, minus item 10B, which was considered earlier this evening. Mr. Trudgen, if you'd give us a summary of the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and council, we have a lengthy consent agenda. Agenda item 10A approves payments in the amount of $1,360,441.76. Item 10B was already taken up and acted upon. Item 10C approves the purchase of a number of things, including sanitary sewer and storm catch basin repair, chair replacements in the city hall and maintenance facility, payment for centerline striping services, and boulevard streetscape maintenance. Finally, this action authorizes expenditures to rehabilitate the Lexington Park parking lot and pathway, County Road B pathway, and the concrete sidewalk on Fernwood Avenue. Agenda item 10D approves the hiring of TKDA to be a construction observer for the replacement of a large retaining wall in South McCarren Boulevard between Woodruff and Glenwood Avenues. Replacement of the wall will incorporate a soil nail installation to minimize the construction disturbance to the adjacent properties. Due to this unique and highly technical installation, it will be necessary to hire TKDA to be on site to observe the installation throughout the project. The cost of the services will be $53,500, and the overall project cost will be estimated is estimated to be $1.3 million. All of the costs of the wall will be funded by municipal state aid funds. Item 10E authorizes the food and beverage services agreement between the city of Roseville and Borough Local Restaurant for the Cedar Home Community Building. Item 10F approves a resolution authorizing the revocation and designation of municipal state aid roads. You may recall, the same request came forward at a previous meeting, however, MINDAS revise the mileage that are affected by .2 miles, so we need to have a new resolution approved by the council. Item 10G approves a project agreement with the owner of Lexington Plaza regarding the partial reconstruction of the south side of Roma Avenue adjacent to the property. The existing perpendicular parking within the roadway and private property will be removed, and the street will be reconstructed with new curb and gutter, as well as new sidewalk. All costs of the project will be paid by the owner. Item 10H approves a memorandum of agreement with Rice Creek Watershed regarding the maintenance and inspection of Ramsey County Ditch 4. The city will take over the maintenance and inspection services and be reimbursed by Rice Creek Watershed. Item 10I approves the 2023 wellness program for city employees. Item 10J adopts a resolution approving an inflow and infiltration agreement with met council. This will allow us to capture some grand dollars in the amount of approximately $135,700. Item 10K receives a 2022 police forfeiture account summary report. Item 10L authorizes submitting an application to AmeriCorps to host a Impact Core Housing Stability Fellow. If this application is successful, the Housing Stability Fellow will assist the city's housing navigator and work with the Roseville Police Community Action Team and other partners to assist individuals and families that are experiencing homelessness. This is a 12-week position here, and the position, the wages will be paid for by AmeriCorps. And finally, item 10M authorizes the agreement, I'm sorry, authorizes the acceptance of donation by John and Chris Robertson Smith for the installation of public art at the here at Alexander Nature Center, and also authorizes entering into a public art agreement with the artist Lori Green regarding the creation and installation of public art, as you may recall, the city council did. We see this information in the February 27th meeting, and tonight's action formally has us entering into those agreements, and that is the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgen. Is there a motion from the council on the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Atten, seconded by Councilmember Groff. Any discussion? I did want to just note, I think we're very grateful for the donation in support of that art installation, so wanted to publicly acknowledge that, and also look forward to the position, hopefully, coming through on the summer Impact Core Housing Stability Fellow. I think that's another, another way to get at some of those issues, so appreciate that and staff looking out for that. There's nothing else on the motion, or no other discussion on the motion. We have the motion before us to approve those consent items, with the exception of B that was approved earlier. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Those items are approved. Next is future agenda review. Mr. Trudgen, would you update us on upcoming meeting agendas?
Yes, just real briefly, this is previously referenced. This Wednesday, April 12th, we'll have ethics training in this room, 6:30. City Attorney Tierney will regale us with all types of ethical situations and...
Big plans, big plans.
Big plans, so it'll be very interesting. We are recording it, for those that aren't able to make it, and we'll post it on the website for people to watch. On April 20, I'm sorry, April 17th, we have the city council meeting. One item is the classification and compensation study discussion. We want to bring forward the consultant and have the discussion with the council as we head into this agreement. Given that it's a work session, I was intending maybe sit at the table, if everybody's comfortable in doing that. That's what we did pre-COVID. That gives an ability to have a more informal conversation. It'll be like a regular meeting otherwise, of course, and televised, but we'll be at the table. On the 24th, we have several things going. We'll recognize outgoing commissioners. We do want to have at least start of a conversation of the commission interview process that we just went through, and we have a couple items that were forwarded by city council members, one by Councilmember Atten regarding commission scopes, duties, and functions, and try to flesh that out, understand maybe what we want to do moving forward, and then from Councilmember Strawn, regarding engagement with the community, such as town halls and coffee with councils and being out in the community. We also will be receiving the quarterly financial report as well in that evening, and we'll add the massage therapy ordinance that we just talked about. On May 8th, we have the National Police Officers Memorial Day, National Police Week proclamation. We'll have the presentation of the city audit, and also plan to have civil service, Police Civil Service Commission joint meeting. We're going to get back into the rotation of all the joint meetings here. May 15th is our meeting after the 8th, and we do have an EDA meeting with a couple items about receiving an award from CEE. I guess we're the highest amount of energy audits occurring in the city of Roseville in all the areas they serve, and they want to recognize us for that, so that program's worked out really well. We want to have conversations about the small business microloan program, also looking at replenishing the Roseville revolving loan fund. I think we've gotten some good hits on that, that we need to maybe add some additional dollars. And tentatively, TIF district report, kind of give an update. Now, we're in the, in the middle of compiling that and working with LRS, so we may or may not have that. We're going to shoot for that, but just tentative. And as of now, beyond consent agenda items, I don't have much on the 15th for the agenda, but that can certainly change as we go forward, so I just want to mention that. Then before I end, I just want to do a really quick legislative update. We have several items in process down at the legislature, but I'm sad to report the sales tax. We did have a public hearing in the Senate. On the House side, they are not taking up any sales tax bills at all this year. The House decided not to hold any hearings. They are looking to set up a committee of the legislature, apparently, over the summer to look at the process of sales tax and how that works, beyond just the legislative process to go down there, they're also want to look at, you know, maybe what the policy is, there's concerns about regresiveness of tax and kind of haves and have-nots, so there's a lot there. So the sense we get from the league is that nothing's going to happen at all this year of the session, that's already been announced, and potentially, things will be taken up next session in regards to that. So I don't think we'll have any movement on that. As you know, even if something were to pass this year, we would not have the referendum election until 2024, so we certainly still have some time. The hotel licensing was put in the House omnibus state government bill, that's making its way through. We had a hearing in the Senate, and I presume something similar will be included in the omnibus bills. They just have been on break here, so now they're back at it, so haven't tracked where that is in the Senate yet, but it does seem like there is a really good chance we'll get the hotel licensing bill passed. And then the bonding, there was a Senate hearing, we're included in that omnibus bill. I don't think it's been out yet, but it's been announced that all the requests that were heard will be put in the omnibus bill. Nothing yet on the House side as far as a hearing, but we'll be ready to do that. And just as recollection, we're asking for $753,000 to finish up the oval completions, mostly HVAC units and some other stuff like that. So we are making some pretty good progress down there. We'll probably wait till the last second to know for sure, and I'll keep everybody informed, but thanks to the mayor, and thanks for Councilmember Strawn in keeping us all on track here, making sure we're connecting with legislators, and I think we've made substantial progress this year.
Massage, then?
You know, yeah, I checked again today as a mayor. It's been referred to committee, but it hasn't had a hearing, so I'm not sure. I haven't reached out to Senator Ummo Veritton yet, but I'm not sure if there's a likelihood of getting the hearing, but I think the deadlines are pretty close, so it may not happen this year. We'll see.
All right. Thank you. Just quickly on the subject of legislation, I did communicate, I think, to council members and staff about the sacred settlement bill down at the legislature, which is related to our previous meeting we had related to the Prince of Peace homeless installation. It sounds like that bill has gotten into the omnibus labor bill on both the Senate and the House, and so it's got a, seems a fairly high likelihood of passing, unless, obviously, over the course of consideration of the omnibus bill, that something gets pulled out or whatever, but that seems to be where it's at. So that may provide us some guidance in terms of dealing with those situations, because it's basically a statewide sort of preemption of local action requiring municipalities to allow those within certain parameters. So depending on how that goes at the legislature, we may be getting a report from staff as to how it impacts us, and if it doesn't make it through, obviously, then we've still got issues that we need to figure out in that regard. The other thing I wanted to note, although it's not likely to move in this session, we did hear from the folks at Nine North that there is a bill that was introduced very recently, which is very late in the session for a bill to receive serious consideration, but it's involving, I believe it's a 1% sales tax on provision of digital services, which gets into like streaming and, you know, provision of internet service, which are currently not covered by cable franchise fees, which cities collect to help fund our local access. It's designed to be a way to better fund local access, and, but once again, it's so late in the process, I don't think it's going to get much traction this hearing, this year, this session, but we'll see. So I'll keep council pull...
The hotel licensing was put in the House omnibus state government bill. That's making its way through. We had a hearing in the, in the Senate, and I presume something similar will be included in the omnibus bills. They just have been on break here, so now they're back at it. So, haven't tracked where that is in the Senate yet, but it does seem like there's a really good chance we'll get the hotel licensing bill passed. And then the bonding, there was a Senate hearing. We're included in that omnibus bill. I don't think it's been out yet, but it's been announced that all the requests that were heard will be put in the omnibus bill. Nothing yet on the House side as far as a hearing, but we'll be ready to do that. And just as recollection, we're asking for $753,000 to finish up the Oval completions, most of HVAC units, and some other stuff like that. So, so we are making some pretty good progress down there. We'll probably wait till the last second to know for sure, and I'll keep everybody informed. But thanks to the mayor, and thanks for Councilmember Strawn, and keeping us all on track here, and making sure we're connecting with legislators, and I think we've made substantial progress this year.
Massage, then?
You know, yeah, I checked again today. As, as the mayor, it's been referred to committee, but it hasn't had a hearing, so I'm not sure. I haven't reached out to Senator Umovir written yet, but I'm not sure if there's a likelihood of getting the hearing, but I think the deadlines are pretty close, so it may not, may not happen this year. We'll see.
All right. Thank you. Just quickly on the subject of legislation, I did communicate, I think, to council members and staff about the sacred settlement bill down at the legislature, which is related to our previous meeting we had related to the Prince of Peace homeless installation. It sounds like that bill has gotten into the omnibus labor bill on both the Senate and the House, and so it's got a, seems a fairly high likelihood of passing, unless, obviously, over the course of consideration of the omnibus bill, that something gets pulled out or whatever, but that seems to be where it's at. So, that may provide us some guidance in terms of dealing with those, those situations, because it's basically a statewide sort of preemption of local action requiring municipalities to allow those and within certain parameters. So, depending on how that goes with the legislature, we may be getting a report from staff as to how it impacts us, and if it doesn't make it through, obviously, then we've still got issues that we need to figure out in that regard. The other thing I wanted to note, although it's not likely to move in this session, we did hear from the folks at Nine North that there is a bill that was introduced very recently, which is very late in the session for a bill to receive serious consideration, but it's involving, I believe it's a 1% sales tax on provision of digital services, which gets into like streaming and, you know, provision of internet service, which are currently not covered by cable franchise fees, which cities collect to help fund our local access. It's designed to be a way to better fund local access, and, but once again, it's so late in the process, I don't think it's going to get much traction this hearing, this year, this session, but we'll see. So, I'll keep council posted on that as, as developments may come, and maybe as we get to our discussion of legislative priorities for the next session, that may be something that we want to keep on our radar screen, depending ultimately what we think about it as a, as a council. That's a sub, a, a add-on legislative update. Any council-initiated items for future meetings, liaison reports, or announcements from council members? Councilmember Strawn?
Just, I'm, while I'm no longer on it, Ramsey County Legal Local Governments has a program on Friday that, from 7:30 to 9 on Zoom, and I believe it's about transportation.
It's about garbage collection.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's about garbage collection. Yeah, so that should be interesting. Next Wednesday, Metro Cities is having their annual meeting. It's at 5:00 PM at the Oval, and that's open to any of us on this council, if we'd like to go. And I wanted to confirm, I believe 6:30 is ethics training, but isn't there something prior in transition to new?
So, for any new commissioners, there'll be commissioner training. We've done a batch of that already, but also chair and vice chair training that the mayor and I will do. But 6 o'clock, we'll have some food here, so people gather and just eat, and then 6:30 starts.
I didn't know about that last year, so it's helpful to know that there's a little social in advance to kind of greet and welcome the new people.
And the, and the council training, just, the council member, or commission member training and chair training is at 5:30?
Yes.
Before the 6 o'clock social time, just if there's any commissioners who are looking to attend that?
Right.
And that's been communicated to them?
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Strawn?
I don't think I have anything else.
Okay.
Thank you.
I kind of jumped on you there, so I didn't want to, yeah. All right. Any other council member reports, announcements, or communications? Otherwise, the only thing left on our agenda is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Atten to adjourn. No discussion on a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and we are adjourned at 8:32. Thank you, everyone.